Thank you all for joining us. We have the three selectmen, town council Nina Pickering Cook, our project manager, if you will, from the consulting firm Jeff Davis from Horstley Witten, who has been assigned to us by the state to work on the MBTA Communities Act, and Jody Shu from the planning board. So thank you all for coming. Appreciate it. I asked that we put together this meeting so that we can all just gather together once more before we start the real work-intensive phase of this three-step process of adhering to the requirements of the MBTA Communities Act. And my apologies for not recognizing Laura Harbottle as well, who was instrumental in working with Jeff in the very beginning. So thank you Laura. This may be the last time you all see Laura at a Dover meeting, so we really appreciate you being here today. So we just want to go through sort of a recap of where we are, and Jeff will go through all that in a quick PowerPoint. Answer any questions about, you know, what's new since we last met? Just to recap, back on March 3rd of 2022, we presented the step one requirement. And then on January 20th of this year, you approved, along with the planning board, the submission of an action plan, which was step two of the process. Step three, oh hi Val. So Valen has also joined us from the planning board. Step three is the passage of a bylaw that meets the requirements of the act, which for Dover is required by December 31st, 2025. As a small adjacent community, we are the last group that needs to adhere to this act. But Jeff and his crew have started working with us, and we're sort of targeting the May 2025 town meeting, should the town decide to proceed. And I know the last two votes have been two to one. I wanted to get something on the record for this one as well, because there's going to be a lot of effort involved of working with the, by the planning board, working with Jeff and his crew. I want to make sure that this team is all on the same page as to how best to proceed. So with that introduction, I'd like to introduce Jeff Davis, and he will go through a slide deck that should answer a lot of questions and remind us all of what we're dealing with. So thank you Jeff.
Great. Thank you so much. Let me just make sure my screen is organized. Chop up screens are showing up on your PowerPoint presentation?
Yep, we've got you.
Yep.
Great.
We got the right screen here.
Good, good.
You're a pro.
I've been doing this for three years now.
It shows.
So I just wanted to quickly introduce myself, and thank you again Carol for the introduction. So I work with the Horstley Witten Group. We're a planning and engineering firm based in Sandwich, Massachusetts, although I work out of our Providence, Rhode Island office. And Horstley Witten is providing free technical assistance to a number of communities throughout the Commonwealth through the Massachusetts Housing Partnership. So it is a grant managed by MHP that is providing this technical assistance to the town. All right, so just wanted to, and I know most of you are generally familiar with this, so again, we'll try to make this quick so we can focus more on conversation. Background on the law, why is the state doing this? You know, the state has found that most multifamily housing in Massachusetts is subject to unpredictable time-consuming permitting processes. They often require a special permit rezoning or 40B. And basically, the section 3A law was designed to remove barriers to multifamily residential development near transit, and to make sure that there is somewhere that it is allowed by right. I know in your packet, you all received a printout of a lot of the information that's on the state website, but you can find that at mass.gov/MBTACommunities. A lot of great information there. So the law itself, section 3A, oh bless you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Section 3A of MGL 40A states that MBTA communities must have at least one zoning district anywhere in the town, which multifamily, in which multifamily housing is permitted by right. So in other words, not with a special permit. Although however, site plan review is okay. Site plan review is considered by rights. So on top of allowing multifamily by rights, the law states that there must be a minimum gross density of 15 units per acre. It must be located not more than half a mile from a transit station, if applicable, as we'll discuss, since Dover does not have a transit station, that standard is not applicable in Dover. There should be no age restrictions, and housing should be suitable for families with children. In other words, there can be no caps on the number of bedrooms or occupancy for a particular unit. There also must be parity with other uses. So in other words, you can't require certain standards for multifamily housing that you don't require for other permitted uses. So the state, and it's going to take me a long time to stop saying DHCD, it rolls off the tongue much better than EOHLC. For those of you who do not hear, DHCD is now officially the Executive Office of Housing and Livable Communities as of last month. So the office that used to be DHCD announced in August 2022, the compliance guideline. So how municipalities are to comply with the law? And these guidelines include a compliance model, which is a nifty little spreadsheet in Excel that calculates whether a municipality zoning and other policies comply with the law. So these tools actually have been very helpful for municipalities, I think, very helpful, certainly for us on the consulting end of things, to help us understand what communities need to do to comply. And again, all that, all that information is online.
So Jeff, can I ask you a practical question?
Certainly.
So it talks about, you know, a minimum gross density of 15 units, but you specifically said that there can be no parameters with respect to number of bedrooms?
Right.
So then does that defer back to your building code, I'm assuming? So for instance, in theory, and this is just out there, it would never happen, but you could have 15 100-bedroom units?
15, I think you may have misspoken, 15 100?
No, no, because, right, because it was, it's just an extreme example. So if the only parameter is 15 units, it could be 15 units, each unit having an unlimited number of bedrooms, and that number of bedroom would be limited by your zoning regulations?
Yes.
It's just a completely extreme example.
And I'm going to jump in here Jeff. So 15 units per acre is an average across the entire zone, right? So you can have some areas that are more dense and some areas that are less dense. But that, that, the practical implication there is there's going to be limits placed on the density of the units based on normal zoning dimensional requirements, right? So you can't have 15 100-bedroom units, because that would have to be, you know, 40 stories tall. And your zoning is not going to limit, is not going to allow it to be 40 stories tall. So the way you figure out, the way they calculate those average units per acre is in looking at, you know, the housing allowed by right is, is, you know, like a baseline, you're allowed multifamily by right. But then on top of that are other layers of setback, height restrictions.
Okay, so everything else applies.
Yes, exactly. Your zoning still applies, you know, the, the planning board continues to review. This is not like a 40B that gets to like skip the line on your, on your zoning.
Okay, and that's, okay, and that's what I was trying to get at. So it doesn't provide for, and, and maybe you're going to get to this later, but it seems as though from reading this, what we're required to do is only to designate an area. There's no commitment to building multifamily.
And, and yes, I'll absolutely go over that in my slides.
Okay, all right. That's it. Thank you.
Certainly. Thank you. Let's take questions anytime, anytime you have them. So this, I think, is less relevant in the case of Dover, but just as a heads up, when it comes to affordable housing, a lot of communities currently have or desire to have an inclusionary zoning component that would require a certain percentage of new housing be set aside as affordable. The MBTA Communities Law allows this, but with limitations. So no more than 10% of the new units can be affordable at no less than 80% of the area median income. This can be increased up to 20% if a community adopts a 40R district. Or there is guidance that was recently released for conducting an economic feasibility analysis, basically to show to the state that the affordability requirement isn't going to hamper or, you know, development of housing. So again, I don't think this is something that Dover is necessarily considering, but just wanted to let you know that that is part of the law.
Yeah, and I don't think they can do a 40R district anyways.
Right, right. So again, probably not applicable to you, but just wanted to let you know. So, specific targets for Dover, based on the law. MBTA communities fall into four different categories. If you have rapid transit, in other words, those that have a T station, those with commuter rail stations, adjacent communities, so those that are adjacent to a community that has a station, or in your case, an adjacent small town, where you're a community that's adjacent to a community with a station, but you have 7,000 people or less, or a population density of less than 500 persons per square mile. So again, Dover is considered that adjacent small town, which means you have a much lower target than other communities. So to Robin's point, your goal is to have a district where in theory, up to 102 or at least 102 units of multifamily housing would be allowed by right. And where did they come up with this number? That is currently 5% of Dover's 2020 housing stock. There is no minimum land area for adjacent small towns, so this can be as small or as large an area as you want, so long as you hit that 15 units per acre. Because you don't have a station area, there's no location requirement. So this can happen anywhere in the town that you think it would be most appropriate. And as Carol noted at the beginning, the deadline for adoption of zoning that is in compliance is December 31st, 2025. So I wanted to talk a little bit about what these targets mean and what they don't mean, and I hope this will get to some of Robin's questions. So section 3A does not require that multifamily housing be built. So you are not, you do not have a target. No one is keeping track of how many multifamily units you have today, or how many you will have in the future. Compliance is strictly based on adopting zoning that meets the standards. The 3A law also does not compel communities to design or pay for new infrastructure to accommodate future multifamily development. So in other words, if you do not have the infrastructure capacity to support that level of residential density, that's fine. The state isn't going to come in and make you build housing that you cannot accommodate. So, you know, if, if you have this zoning in place and you say, you know, we don't actually have the infrastructure capacity to approve a development project at 15 units per acre, you can approve things at less than 15 units per acre, if you don't have that infrastructure capacity. This also does not supersede the Massachusetts Wetlands Protection Act, nor Title V of Massachusetts Environmental Code. So in other words, if there are environmental carrying capacity issues on the land, that continues to apply, even if, again, at the end of the day, what gets built is less than 15 units per acre. So just a reminder that zoning is a menu, not a development plan, and, and the state is not asking you to approve any development plans, just to offer this menu. So what do these targets mean? So again, as, although some units may already exist, when we talk about the unit capacity, that 102-unit capacity target for Dover, we are imagining a fictitious world where everything has been torn down, you're starting from scratch, and what could theoretically be built on that property in that scenario? So you may have, in this example, a parcel where there's already two units, but if your zoning allows technically for four units on that property, then that's all you need to do. That two-unit can stay there forever. It never has to be redeveloped or changed, so long as the underlying zoning would allow for the density required under the law. And when we talk about multifamily housing, what exactly are we talking about? What does the law require? So the law defines multifamily housing as "a building with three or more residential dwelling units, or two or more buildings on the same lot with more than one residential dwelling unit in each building." So this means you do not have to require, you do not have to allow large-scale multifamily, you know, multi-story, multifamily structures. We are talking about anything from three units in a building or greater. So we have certainly worked with communities that have said we're going to limit this to no more than four units per building, and they have the land area and the units per acre to make that work. So just to know, we're not being forced to build high-rise apartment buildings. It can be any of these types of housing, and we can put limitations on, on that. So consequences for non-compliance, and this is where I would love for Nina to jump in with her legal opinion. Very, very basically, an MBTA community that fails to comply shall not be eligible for funds from the Housing Choice Initiative, Local Capital Projects Fund, or the MassWorks Infrastructure Program. And beyond this, the Massachusetts Attorney General.
Yeah, so I'm going to, I'll jump in Jeff and stop you there. So as the law is written, the, the consequences for non-compliance is this lack of funding. This is, or restriction on state funds. This is really the carrot and stick to complying with housing choice. The state had, because zoning is typically a local and individualistic legislative attempt, the state coming in to try to change zoning, was kind of on legally precarious grounds, I'll say that. And the way they were able to do it is through a state entity like the MBTA touching certain places. And again, the, the way they can require compliance is through these funding sources. So there were a number of towns, so this is as the law is written in this kind of, let's call this step one of, of non-compliance. This is how the law is written. A number of towns, when the Housing Choice was passed, looked at this and said, "There's no way we're going to be able to comply with this. I've done the cost-benefit analysis. We're just going to forego MassWorks funding." Or, you know, "We're just going to decide that, that the costs of compliance are not worth these state monies, so we're just not going to comply." When that became, when that approach became clear to the state, that's when the incoming Attorney General Andrea Campbell looked at this and said, "Well, we, we want some additional stronger requirements on this to tell these towns, you actually don't have the option of non-compliance." The law was written as if you did have that option, but I've looked at this as Attorney General, and I've decided you actually have to comply. And if you don't comply, you're violating state law. And we also think we can go after you for housing discrimination, essentially. So this was, this advisory that came out shortly after Andrea went into, was sworn in, was, is a very heavy-handed statement by the state that, to all those communities that were doing that cost-benefit analysis and saying, "You guys don't have the option of not complying anymore. It's not just a lack of funding. We're actually going to come after you for violating the law." There are many, many towns, not many, many. There, there are towns within MBTA communities who have said, "I don't think the Attorney General has any authority to bring a civil enforcement action under the MBTA Housing Choice Act, where the Housing Choice Act itself doesn't set forth that remedy." So there is, I, it is my guess that at some point there's going to be a fight between some town and the state as to whether the Attorney General has the authority to require compliance with MBTA communities above and beyond just stripping the funding that's set forth in law. So this is like, this is all the stuff that's like very interesting to lawyers. What this means to you is that the state has very clearly said, "We think this is really important. We're not going to let you get away with non-compliance, at least not without a fight." So those towns that believe they would have a difficult time complying, may well still say, "Not only is it too expensive or, or too infeasible for us to actually change the zoning, but even if we had a lawsuit with the state, we'd rather spend money on a lawsuit with the state and, and have the court tell us whether they have the authority to do this, rather than implement this." That is a legal fight that I think would be really interesting, but that's not a legal fight that I think Dover should get into. The requirements for Dover to comply, as Jeff said, are very low in comparison with other communities. There's no kind of site restriction. The location can be anywhere in town. And the density and the number of units is quite low. So there, there may be people who do end up challenging the required compliance. I can certainly discuss that with you all, specifically the select board, if they want to discuss that, but that's not something I would be recommending at this point, given the requirements that, and plan you have in place for compliance.
So Nina, what if, Nina, what if we decided to do both? So Westwood is telling the state to stick it, and they're not complying. And I'm sure they're going to be, as you said, there're going to be other towns that do that. There's, there's, not being an attorney, I don't think that this law is going to have any chance to be upheld by the Massachusetts Supreme Court. But, so what if Dover did both? What if, if Westwood or another community, they join together to fight this, which seems like something like that will happen? And Dover joined that, just, can you do that? And then simultaneously continue to go through the process? Because I just think that that's something that's going to happen with a lot of towns.
That's a good question. So yes, you certainly can. The question then becomes, if other towns are going forward to challenging the law, you essentially could be a free rider, right? Because if the law's overturned, it's going to apply to you, whether you were, that decision is going to apply to the town, whether you were a part of that lawsuit or not. So it depends how much the board or the town would like to be out front and have us be involved in that lawsuit and in that litigation.
Just two more questions for me, Nina. One's for Carol, and one's, one's back to Jeff. Jeff, did Newton just change their restrictions on height? They went up, I believe, three stories, right all along the green line to comply with the density and to add more density, which people around that are going to fight. It's not something that's been received very well. Was the 40R restriction, was that what they used to do that?
No, I think they just changed their zoning. I don't, I haven't looked at what Newton did specifically, but I think they just changed their underlying zoning to allow for multifamily and then increase the dimensional requirements, is my understanding. The 40R component only comes in with the affordability requirements.
I just, I thought it was unusual that they did it specifically along the green line, and that's why.
Well, Newton, you, you have to remember, Newton has requirements that their zone needs to be within half a mile of the station.
Right.
So Dover doesn't have that requirement. It can be anywhere. But it doesn't do Newton any good to create a zone far away from the green line.
Yeah, last question for me, Nina, is Carol, have you in the planning board determined where you would like the zone to be?
Well, that's exactly why Jeff and his team is on board with us. And he has, he has started the process of looking at everything, so the answer is no, but that's exactly what the consultant is here to help us with.
Is a really, really beautiful plot of land on Number Two Cross Street that is very close to the MBTA tracks?
And a whole bunch of land on Meeting House Hill Road owned by the same person.
Brought to your A-game this morning.
I'm always prepared for you, John.
Yeah, I don't know these inside jokes. You guys explain these to me.
Jeff, Carol, Carol will bring you in. Sorry, sorry to bore you with that. That's it for me. Thank you all.
So Nina, this is Bob Springett. I am really interested in sort of the Rebel Alliance. How many people are in the Rebel Alliance?
I don't know of any town yet that has decided they are doing a legal challenge. And that just maybe because I haven't asked, but on the MMLA listserv, people are certainly talking about it. The MMLA, sorry, is the Mass Municipal Lawyers Association, so all the town councils on the listserv have discussed it, but I don't know. I haven't taken any affirmative steps to pull together an alliance. And I can look into doing that if you all want me to, but I haven't done that yet.
Yeah, so the other question is being a free, what did you call it, a free rider?
I did, yeah.
Yeah.
Backing back to my economics minor days.
Yeah, so I'm certainly more interested in being a participant than a free rider. And I think that, I mean, I have strong objections to this law and its requirements. And I don't see it in any way, shape, or form in the interest of Dover to, to do what's being suggested here. And, and so depending on how the board overall votes, my stake on this is, this is an intrusion into how we live in Dover. I have no idea who the proponents of the law are, what their particular stake is. This has been a stealth initiative as far as I'm concerned, except for the initial blow-up when the first, you know, edict was proclaimed. I also would like, from a Dover perspective, I would like our citizens to be way more engaged in this particular process. Again, I think this has been sort of a slot, a well-constructed method of avoiding publicity by putting out a three-stage effort and working sort of in the, in the bowels of different municipalities. And I object to that as well. The, so from my perspective, I'm very interested in the Rebel Alliance. And I personally would choose to go that way, rather than comply with this ridiculous law.
Bob, I do know that Westwood is already.
John, I can hear you, bud. I'm sorry. Can you hear me now?
Yeah.
Mona's got a device. Yeah, she's, so I know that Westwood. Yeah, that she's, so I know that Westwood has already done something and I don't know if whether it's the notification, but. They are not in compliant and they've already, they've already notified the state that they do not intend to be in compliance with this.
Well, because of our meeting the other night, I now know Pat Ahern, so I can reach out to to Pat and see what the story is. Um, I think I would like, I mean, I'm, I'm getting, I think, direction from the board on that. I think I I would prefer to have a vote of the board.
So, so Nina, I would like to state my piece because I. Wholeheartedly disagree with Bob. We, by not complying to this law, are going to miss out on millions of dollars. Of infrastructure relief from the town. We currently have a two million dollar math works grant that we've applied for. For Claybrook as well as the Culver infrastructure. For me, as. I, I think from a fiduciary standpoint, that is really irresponsible for us not to take into account. Those funds when we're looking at fifteen million dollars of capital, of which approximately six million. Is for infrastructure. Um, from what I can tell, all we're required to do here is to designate. An area in which we, we can have a multifamily housing. That complies with this MBTA requirement. Um, it's no different from the regulations that the government has, all this Commonwealth has put on us for forty B. And even if you participate with those communities that are against us. There is no guarantee whatsoever that this is not going to be a regulation. That you, you as a community will not be required to comply with. So the question I have from a legal standpoint is while. We're waiting to see what the outcome of this is, because. You know, clearly there are communities that are gonna challenge it, what is the risk to Dover to continue down the path? We're continuing by working towards um putting in place this area. You know, a zoning bylaw requires a vote of town meeting. We can't guarantee the outcome of that vote. So what does that do if in the interim, we receive funds from the state? And the community votes it down, the, at the end of the day, the citizens of Dover are gonna have their say.
So it, it, I only heard one question in there, which is what's the risk to you all of continuing down the road of compliance?
Right, and do you agree with the statement that ultimately we may not get the community to vote yes on this, on this zoning bylaw? We can't just unilaterally say this area has been designated for multifamily dwellings. In compliance with this.
One thing to remember about that, however, is unlike other zoning bylaws, the threshold for this zoning change is a majority, not two thirds. They did that specifically so it would be easier to pass um in view of kind of historic barriers. That have been put in place by the two thirds super majority. Um, as far as any, you know, what you all risk by continuing down the road of compliance, which you've already started on.
Right.
Normally, I would just say whatever funds you're going to expend, um but at this point, Jeff is free. Um, and so you're not, you know, to the limited extent I would be involved, you would have some fees for me, but. Other than that, I do not, in in staff time, I don't wanna undersell that, but other than those kind of human resources. Um, there is not a a legal risk you face by continuing down the road of compliance. Um, as at this, either instead of challenging the law or at the same time as challenging the law, as I think John was suggesting.
Right, and but are we at risk for having to return? Any mass works grants that we may receive while um if if town meeting. Does not allow for the zoning change.
I, I believe the penalties of the funding are forward-looking only. So it's, it's at the point that they would declare the town not in compliance. So if the vote at town meeting fails. Um, and you don't, you, what you should do is scramble to have another town meeting before December twenty twenty five. But if by December thirty one twenty twenty five, you don't have zoning in place. DHCD slash whatever they're called are going to declare you not into compliance and it's at that point. If you applied for a mass works grant, you would be deemed, you know, disqualified. Um, I don't see any mechanism by which they can reach back and and pull back funds that have already been awarded or allocated.
Right, so then my position is strongly that I cannot put the town in a position whereby. We will not be eligible for millions of dollars in grants available for infrastructure that we desperately need. By not complying with this right now, I think ultimately the town decides at town meeting. So that's, that's, that's my position.
So that I am clear on uh uh my role in this. Um, and and I'm sure Jeff as well, um. It seems as if, my understanding from John's approach is that John would like to continue down the path of compliance. But also um have me seek out and get involved with any opposition or legal challenge to the law. Bob's position is halt all compliance and go for the legal challenge. Um, Robin is just comply.
Right, I mean, so long as there is no risk to us by being of losing these funds. And by risk, I mean the Commonwealth saying if you participate. In with with those communities that have elected not to to challenge this. Then you are not eligible for these funds. I'm, I'm, I don't, I don't think we should continue, um we should participate. Now, I, we, we desperately need. Hope funding the infrastructure repairs that need to happen. And and I view this law no different than the state. Changing the stormwater requirements that have now um. Precipitated all this infrastructure repair that we have to spend millions of dollars on. You know, the state, the Commonwealth is constantly doing this kind of stuff to the town. So that's, so that's my position, I, I, I feel strongly that I do not wanna jeopardize this funding. While we're waiting to see what happens, so if participating. In in these lawsuits does that, then I'm not in favor of doing it. Um, but still, from my position. You should be as educated as you possibly can, so I would like you to go and understand from the towns that are contesting it. You know, what they're planning to do and keep up to date with all new information that is available. So that we can make educated decisions and, you know, we can certainly communicate what is going on. To the town so that when December twenty twenty five comes along, this is not a surprise to anyone.
So Nina, I have a question, Robin's based in this on the fact that if we don't comply, we're not eligible for the funding. Or um that that may be at risk, is that true?
Yes. There's two levels of legal challenges here. Set forth in the law. Plainly set forth in the law is um a requirement that in order to be. Um, in order to qualify for those specific state funds, you need to qualify. You need to be in compliance with the law as according to DHCD. DHCD has set forth guidelines in and milestones in which it will determine compliance and noncompliance. If at the next milestone marker, which I should have, but Jeff can tell us what that is. Um, the town is deemed not in compliance. I believe DHCD at that point would tell the state Dover is not in compliance, they're not eligible for these funds. What's the next milestone, Jeff?
I don't think there's a milestone again until December twenty fifth. Yeah. You know, if if the town proactively says, you know, signs up to a lawsuit and says, we are, we're telling you we're not complying. Uh, you're maybe that serves as a threshold point, I don't know.
I don't, I don't know either, I think that's undetermined at this point, the state may certainly try to say. Um, yeah, you've publicly stated you're not gonna comply, so we're gonna withhold funding at this point.
So otherwise it would be twenty five, December twenty five? And so I have a hard time believing that if you take, if you take a legal action to protect a right, that you're gonna be punished by the state. While that isn't, while that is being litigated.
Well, that's what they're saying.
I know they can say anything, right? I mean, governments have this ability to basically, you know. If you look at what's going on in the country and you look at the state laws that are being passed.
So you draw the spend money litigating trying to get these funds and in the meantime you have to do the repairs, so you have to spend towns money.
I don't, how much money are we, I mean, I'm not sure. Yeah, how much?
And two million.
Okay. I mean, thirty, or two million bucks, you know, it's the same, same problem.
Bob, I, I, I would say I am quite certain that the new Attorney General. Would gleefully pursue claims against the town of Dover if Dover says that it's not going to comply. So this idea that, that um, you know, that you have a hard time believing the state's gonna come after you. I, I, I don't have a hard time believing that, I actually think they would love to come after a place like the town of Dover.
That's fine, because again, what the issue is going to be, this is, if this is a political action, right? Then the Rebel Alliance needs to be as big as it can be and be as tough as it can be. And um go back after the state, who have completely overreached in this particular uh situation.
It isn't the, isn't the. Solution then to meet both your and Robin's objectives, what John was proposing?
Yep.
Oh, that may be where we come out, but you know. I certainly don't want to comply without, I don't wanna comply, period, so.
Well, so sometimes, at some point, we're gonna, both Jeff and I will need a clear directive from you all. On how to move forward, I mean, you know, Jeff is, is the, the. The jurisdiction of litigation really is with the Board of Selectmen, you know, as opposed to the Planning Board. But the Planning Board obviously has a role here in trying to um. Develop zoning policy for the town as well, so um someone by, by ten thirty just needs to let us know. How we're going forward.
Well, we just need to take a vote.
Oh, go ahead, Jeff, sorry, I just, three minutes to go over, like, if you choose to uh proceed with uh this exploration of an MBTA communities. I just wanted, take me three minutes to explain uh my role uh in helping you with that. Um, so the first thing would be to work with you to identify uh an area. Uh, where, where multifamily by right might be appropriate. And that can be uh a very public process, I mean, again, to Robin's point, Nina's point, at the end of the day. This has to pass town meeting, so this is not something that's happening in the dark, this is a full-blown community conversation. Uh, like any other action that would be taken at a town meeting. Um, the only thing that, the only requirement you have related to location is that. Um, if the total area is less than five acres, it must all be contiguous. Uh, but other than that, you are wide open in terms of where. Uh, once we work through that, uh we'll determine the dimensional requirements. So how tall are you comfortable with buildings being, uh what about your setbacks, your density? So you have the ability to control all of that so long as uh the number at the end of the day hits that fifteen units per acre. Uh, we also have to make sure, of course, that the other aspects of zoning policy comply with the law. Uh, so the affordable housing, which again, I don't think is going to be an issue here, um making sure there aren't policies that limit family-sized units and so forth. And then at the end of the day, I can help you take all that and put it into the compliance model and test different iterations. And so our goal has been in working with, and we're working with seven other communities currently. Uh, is to start from a place of what works best for you, if we pretended there was no law, of course, in this, in this case. Uh, you know, you're, you're generally not, not, not uh likely to make these changes on your own. But for other communities, trying to identify what would you want um absent of the law? And is there a way for us to uh model that in a way that meets the town's needs while still meeting state law? Um, and maybe the answer, you know, in Dover is, is a hard no, but we can at the very least give you several different scenarios. So as a community, you can say, well, this, we can do this and it would comply, is that, is that something that we're comfortable um? Moving forward with, uh or again, to, you know, to Bob's point, is it, is it more a matter of principle? Uh, and and, you know, you don't care to uh comply on, on, on a basis of, you know, your, your political beliefs. Uh, which is, which is fine, um but that's what we can help you do. Um, and again, uh, our goal is to give you options so that the community can decide. Which one uh best reflects your needs locally, uh and if it happens to comply with state law, bully, you know?
So I would, I would, John, have you looked at the development on one oh nine? Uh, I'm sorry, yeah. It, it on the, on uh one oh nine in Dover, the, the multi-storied forty B?
Absolutely.
And and that, doesn't it look completely out of place?
It, it looks like a very high-density apartment complex.
Right, is that what we want in Dover?
I'm sorry, I'm, I'm sorry, I have, I have to jump in here, um. The Red Robin Development on Route one oh nine was a forty B.
Yes.
You know, a- as has been stated this today and which I think we all know. Um, the town has very little influence over a forty B project. Uh, through the special permit comprehensive zoning, uh because we don't have ten percent of our housing stock being affordable.
Another mandate.
So, and another mandate that actually gets implemented in Dover versus this mandate, which. Which will be highly unlikely to ever be implemented in Dover, so there's an inconsistency of thought here in the reality of it. Just like there's a mandate for stormwater that's gonna cost over millions of dollars as, as you explained in the capital budget presentation at the town meeting. Okay, this isn't costing us anything and will highly, uh highly unlikely ever be implemented. There are other aspects of, of this state uh deeming what is best for local government, which we have to deal with every single day. With, which costs us lots and lots of money and does have a huge impact on the character of Dover. Versus this, which is almost as theoretical as you can get in a state law.
And, and, and also, correct me if I'm wrong, but what I understood Nina to be saying was that. The same zoning um variances that are automatic with a forty B. Are not automatic in this zone, so all of the building. All of the building restrictions that are applicable in Dover will be applicable.
Yeah, my point was high-density buildings look. Yeah, my point was high density buildings look like high density buildings.
Disagree with you, you should see what Mass Audubon has come up with. You know, they, they have some very, very attractive types of more dense development. Go to downtown Concord, it's magnificent. Right.
And one thing I will throw out that we often start with, particularly in the smaller towns we've been working with, uh is to look and see where you have multifamily housing today. And oftentimes for the smaller communities, you can draw a line around your existing multifamily and it meets the compliance standards. Um so in in a number of communities, we haven't really had to even look at anywhere new or think about um areas for new development, but just having the areas where that you've already developed, apply towards your um uh your requirements. Uh and again, I've, I've worked with a couple of communities where they didn't have to go beyond what they already had at all.
Right, so to to explain what Jeff's saying there is, you can, so Red Robin Development, for instance, didn't change the underlying zoning of that parcel.
Right.
It it was allowed in there because of forty B. The town could now say that parcel, we're going to rezone as multifamily by right. And you're not likely to see development increase there because it's already multifamily.
Right.
So that can be a part of your compliant zone and your work towards a zone that would um satisfy a calculation of a hundred and two units.
So Nina, do you know how many units going into one uh on the one oh nine on the Red Robin?
Less than fifty.
I forget.
It's thirty, it's thirty ten, thirty something. Right, it's less than fifty.
So again, they're not going to count the units. What they're gonna do is you can put zoning in place there that allows for a development of fifty units. Um and that would, that would be counted when Jeff does his calculations for compliance. That would be counted as having a capacity of fifty units, even though it's not.
Five zero, it's one five according to what Jeff said, if I heard correctly.
No, so fifteen units per acre, but like if you're saying a total.
Okay, okay.
Yeah.
So but those are, those are things we can explore and see, see what the hell the numbers turn out.
Right. Right, so all about multifamilies may, you know, we have the Meadows, we have Dover Farms, we have Tilted Dale Apartments, and now we're gonna have Red Robin. And all of those may land out meeting the requirements for this MBTA community.
Exactly. You may not have to go beyond that land area. We can test if it's something that you're interested in exploring.
We definitely would be interested in exploring that.
That's just another example of of meeting this test that that lends one to believe that the impact on Dover is of of doing this is almost nil.
Well, the impact.
That places a great trust in government.
Temporarily. I I I don't trust anything that is happening at the state level, Bob. I don't trust a- a- anything at all. In this, in this, as Nina said, the zealous overreach of this one party mandate is just, it 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 makes, makes my stomach turn, but there, we we have to be mindful to fight this, we should do it methodically. And and we also should do it over, as Jeff said, by looking at the limits of what we can test. I I I'm just, I I just think what Nina uh characterized, Bob, where we are as a board is accurate. And I think that we have the best solution temporarily is to continue down the path with having her and Jeff thoroughly look at our options. I don't want to lose a million dollars for Claybrook. I don't want to lose a million dollars for the Center Street Bridge. I don't want to lose a million dollars for um for Willow Street and the Willow Street Bridge. Those are the three big infrastructure projects that we have at the state. I also don't have any confidence that the state is going to deliver on any of that. I have zero confidence that our state, our U- US representative even knows where those three places are, having had many conversations with their office. So I I don't have any confidence in what they have demonstrated, their ability to deliver. So we, we can continue to be opposed to it, but I want to have the options for the residents open in the unlikely event that we actually do get money for these projects. Nina, it did, can can we do both along those lines?
I I I don't see why not. We're in a little bit of uncharted territory here because this is a brand new law and brand new legal challenges. Um but uh it certainly seems uh feasible to me to do both.
So it's it's coming upon uh ten thirty.
Right, so I think we should do a vote.
So before we do a vote, um I might mention that um that this was a scheduled Planning Board meeting uh for which it ends up we do not have a quorum. But it is a scheduled uh Board of Selectmen's meeting for which you do have a quorum and it was never officially opened nor a roll call vote taken. So Nina, is that something that can be done now?
Yes, as far as attendance, I mean, there's, there's no roll call vote that needs to be taken to open the meeting.
Okay, good.
Um any of the votes you take in the meeting need to be done by roll call.
Okay, but the the but the meeting needs to be officially opened, which we didn't do either. My apologies.
I I think by welcoming people.
Okay.
But I can just say, welcome to our June seventh Board of Selectmen meeting. Today's meeting is being conducted remotely consistent with the Governor's Executive Order of March twelfth.
I don't even think you need to.
For this meeting, the Board of Selectmen's convening by Zoom is posted on the town's website. I can ask for a roll call of the, you know, I Bob Springett present.
John Jeffries, President.
Robin Hunter, President, but Nina said we didn't have to do that.
Yeah, well, so we covered the base.
Yeah, it's, it doesn't hurt, but I I think that the kind of formalities that people have put in place for Zoom meetings are kind of unnecessary at this point. They're not required by law.
Well, Ra- uh Carol, uh being mindful, I know Robin's got a hard stop and and we all want to get on with this. And I think we know exactly where we all are and how we all feel. So I am going to very reluctantly move to approve and support Dover Planning Board moving forward to address the requirements of the MBTA Communities Act with the intent of a bylaw being pres- presented no later than May of two thousand and twenty five annual meeting.
Well, it's no later than December, but the goal is for the May two thousand and twenty five meeting.
I think that's what I, isn't that what I said, Robin?
It's the, it's the bylaw. The bylaw would by definition um apply as of um January first, twenty twenty six.
Right, I just wanted to make sure that if for some reason we weren't ready for a May twenty twenty five town meeting, we had the option of voting on this at a town meeting prior to the deadline, which is December thirty first, twenty twenty five.
Yeah, this, this vote will limit, limit that ability. I understand the point, Robin, but this vote, you you, as a select board, you can vote on, you know, anytime.
All right, then I'm gonna second John's motion.
Okay, so then it just moved to the vote, all in favor? No, Bob Springett?
Aye, John Jeffries.
Aye, Robin Hunter.
Done.
So um Nina, just so we're clear, that wha- whatever the process is that you work to reach out to Westwood, reach out to the communities as the Rebel Alliance, that we can, we, you can keep us abreast of of how we can maintain a path on both of these.
Sure, uh so I, I'll look into that. I'll start doing that digging and I'll either provide you an update by group email or if there's something substantive to discuss, we'll have an executive session.
Sounds great, thank you.
John, I nominate you as Obi-Wan Kenobi.
One, one other question as far as process, as the Planning Board continues to work with Jeff. Is there one particular, and given that this is a major project for the Selectmen as well, and I know you tend to um to uh point liaisons for various things like this. Um who should the Planning Board be working with from a Selectmen stand, from a select person standpoint on this? Or you just prefer us to go through the new town administrator?
I think the town administrator is the right way to go right now, Carol.
Okey doke.
I mean, John has still hail. We're wrapping up Community Center. Robin has paramount to do with helping us restaff the uh the townhouse.
Yeah, well, I I don't view this as a short term uh thing.
Right, I mean, I'm, I'm gonna be out of special projects, so I'm I'm, I am happy to be the designee of you and John. So approve that.
Let's start with the TA.
Okay.
Like to see what uh what Mike can do.
Is that, is that a done deal? Okay, great.
We have, as of this very minute, we have two minor things that.
Really? That's great, Robin. If you'll nail it before the week, week's up?
My goal is to have it done today.
All right, excellent, excellent.
Nice, well, Robin, let me know so I can um introduce myself and and get in touch.
Yep, definitely, I will. As soon as he signs the contract, um you know, right, right now, his target start date is July seventeenth, but he's made arrangements with the town he's working in to start to transition to Dover. So he'll be available for meetings, interviewing staff, doing goals and objectives, so.
And I had discussed, i- if someone needs to get off, they can. I had discussed um coming in for office hours soon. Seems as if I should wait to come in for office hours until he is in place. Although, you know, certainly if folks need to speak to me about something, in the meantime, they can reach out.
All right, maybe, maybe we send out a communication to all the committees and let them know that.
I think that makes sense.
All right, thanks a lot, Nina.
Well, thank you, everybody. Uh I think this was a great discussion. Um certainly uh pleased with the outcome and um thank you all for spending the time today.
Okay, so now we officially need to adjourn the meeting.
You want to adjourn the meeting?
I want to officially make a motion to adjourn the meetings.
I'll second that.
Seconded.
All in favor? Aye, Bob Springett.
Aye, John Jeffries.
Aye, Robin Hunter.
Appreciate it.
Thank, and thank you, Jeff, we'll be in touch.
Take care, Jeff, nice meeting you. Laura, thank you for all your help.
Thank you, Bob.
All righty, have a great weekend, guys.